First of all, we're going to call this meeting the Lord's. Our convocation tonight, and by Commissioner Way, pleasure to be here, Mr. Albright.
Hi, Lord.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight. Thank you for your many blessings. We ask that you be with us, help us and guide us as we talk about issues that face our neighbors, families and friends in this community. We ask you to place your hand on those in the community that need your uplifting hand. We also pray for all of those in the world right now for these past few weeks with EMS Week, Law Enforcement Week, and now we are entering the Past Public Workers' Week for our staff here in the city of Creedmore, which we're very thankful for. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I'm the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, and without individual liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'll also remind everybody to silence or cut off your cellphones, please. All right, let me see here, that's done, that's done. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Wilkins. Commissioner Albright.
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski. Commissioner Way.
President.
Mayor Lieutenant Gleason is absent. Mayor Willer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, at this time, is there any additions or subtractions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I want to add a discussion item.
All right.
Discussion of the water testing.
All right, we'll do, I'll tell you what, let's do, let's put that on 6E1 so that the city manager can have a full run at the budget.
Okay.
Any other additions? Not hearing any, all those, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Way, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 420. All right, we move now to item five, introductions and recognitions, and I'll ask Steve to come up.
This is National Public Works Week proclamation, May 18, 2024, 2025, people versus purpose and presence. Whereas public works professionals serve in their communities every day, meeting the needs of people, is what gives public works its potential, focusing on infrastructure, facilities and services that are vital in order to sustainability resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life and well-being of people of Creemore. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for building, approving, protecting our nation's transportation, water supply and water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the city of Creemore to gain knowledge of and to maintain the home-going interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, brought by the American Public Works Association. Being our resolve, I, Mayor Robert Bigwhever, hereby designate the 24th, 2025, National Public Works Week in the city of Creemore. And I request all citizens to join the presence and events of the American Public Works Association, government agencies and activities, events and ceremonies provided by critics for our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions that make to protecting our national health, safety and all of our lives for all. Thank you very much.
Stand closer and act like you love each other.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, 5B update, that's where we are, isn't it? Yeah, yeah, I got it. 5B, which is update on 10-year parks and recreation comprehensive system-wide master plan. It's Chastity, I believe that's you.
It is. Good evening, Commissioner. Over the past several months, our team has been actively working to develop a comprehensive and community-centered master plan. Leading this effort is Jen Beadle, project manager, and Eliza Monroe, park planners from McAdam. So far, we've held monthly progress meetings, conducted a staff listening session and hosted two public engagement events, which included an open house and participation in community special events. Through these efforts, several key values and priorities have emerged and community recommendations that will help shape the direction of the plan. Today, we have Jen Beadle presenting some of these findings and to talk about where we are with this process.
Thank you, Chastity. We should talk to her, too. Hello, how are you all tonight?
Good.
Good, good, good. Yeah, definitely. All right. Now, so like Chastity said, it's super exciting to have her as a new park director here. The town's growing, the department's growing, all of the recreation offerings that you all provide to the community are just so valuable, and it's great to have somebody with her experience coming in and helping guide us. So just tonight, I wanted to give you a brief summary, kind of a check-in, on where we are with this plan. We started, I'd say, the beginning of February or so was when we really started kicking things off, gathering information. Angie has been, I don't know if Angie's here, but Angie has been just invaluable in providing us with background on the park system, taking us on tours all around, giving us history and just filling us in on all the good things that you all have going on. So we did introductions, I apologize that I don't have full screen slides, so bear with me. So tonight, we've got a few things to go over, so we'll just talk a little bit about the context in which this plan is taking place, including the project schedule and kind of what to expect when the plan's finished. We'll talk about some preliminary findings from ones who are on our park tours, community engagement, excited to show you guys all the photos and interesting things that we found out in the community over the past couple of months. Talk about, talk a little bit about how y'all can help us and we can help you help advance this plan and kind of spread, spread information and around the community to your constituents and just get buy-in, especially just making people aware that the plan's going on and what it intends to do. And we'll talk about what comes next. All right, again, I know that these findings are tiny and I apologize. So just a little bit of background on the system and the city. I know that you all know a good bit about the history and plant culture and heritage of the city. But I did want to point out that a few major milestones and achievements that this Parks Department has been able to attain over the past five or so years. So one, I know was back in 2018 where the Gauntlet Park was opened. In our, out and about among the community and stakeholders, we've heard a lot about the Gauntlet Park and how people really do appreciate it and use it. The Creedmore Community Center was built in 2021. Having that indoor facility is such a key, such a key asset here in Creemore, as is the Cross City Trail, which not completed, but several segments, several key segments have been completed in 2016. And right around this, right around this time period was when the revitalization of Lake Rogers had taken place. It's just amazing out there and the new fountain just really adds something to that. And the Center Memorial out here behind the community center just adds a whole lot of value, civic value and pride.
If you keep talking, it'll take me a second.
Oh, really?
Okay, so you just keep talking.
Okay.
Jordan's great.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Angie has been, I don't know if Angie's here, but Angie has been just invaluable in providing us with background on the park system, taking us on tours all around, giving us history, and just filling us in on all the good things that you all have going on. So we did introductions. I apologize that I don't have full screen slides, so have to bear with me. So tonight, we've got a few things to go over, so we'll just talk a little bit about the context in which this plan is taking place, including the project schedule and kind of what to expect when the plan's finished. We'll talk about some preliminary findings from ones who are on our park tours, community engagement, excited to show you guys all the photos, and interesting things that we found out in the community over the past couple of months. Talk about, talk a little bit about how y'all can help us, and we can help you, help advance this plan, and kind of spread, spread information and around the community to your constituents and just get buy-in, and especially just making people aware that the plan's going on and what it intends to do. And we'll talk about what comes next. All right. Again, I know that these findings are tiny, and I apologize. So just a little bit of background on the system and the, the system and the city. I know that you all know a good bit about the history and plant culture and heritage of the city. But I did want to point out that a few major milestones and achievements that this Parks Department has been able to attain over the past five or so years. So one, I know was back in 2018 where the Gauntlet Park was opened. In our, out and about among the community and stakeholders, we've heard a lot about the Gauntlet Park and how people really do appreciate it and use it. The Creedmore Community Center was built in 2021. Having that indoor facility is such a key, such a key asset here in Crete, as is the Cross City Trail, which not completed, but several segments, several key segments have been completed in 2016. And right around this, right around this time period was when the revitalization of Lake Rogers had taken place. It's just amazing out there, and the new fountain just really adds something to that. And the Center Memorial out here behind the community center just adds a whole lot of value, civic value, and pride.
You keep talking, give me a second.
Oh, really?
Okay, so you just keep talking.
Okay.
George is very.
I appreciate it. And just some, some things that we've noticed in terms of like strengths, challenges, and goals of this department. Y'all have a really strong foundation of funds to continue to build park assets. There's diverse programs, there are a lot of partners and other organizations that use your facilities to kind of advance their programs. When we were in, out in the community center doing engagement, we just saw the variety of things that were going on in just like a Wednesday afternoon. There were filters in the, one of the activity rooms, there were people walking the track, there were, later in the afternoon, people were playing pickup basketball. And all of these facilities have, as we noticed, were extremely well-maintained and clean and felt safe. And a couple of, overall goal of for this plan is that the Parks and Recreation Department really wants to seek a goal and vision for the next, for the next 10 years, five to 10 years, to really elevate the system and kind of chart a clear path and goals.
That's very correct, ma'am. If you didn't want, we're gonna.
You're lucky. That's amazing. So here, I've just got a couple of maps. One is the county, you can see kind of where Cretemore's positioned, next to Franklin County, which we're doing another plan for the state, and have been discussing that Franklin County and Wake County both border, both border Granville County at that southern kind of tip right there where Cretemore is, fastest-growing counties in North Carolina. So I know that you know growth is coming, it's already here, but just wanted to take a quick snapshot of that geography. And then here on the left is a snapshot, kind of the city limits of Cretemore, where you can see in green and blue is kind of where those recreational amenities and parks So really, you know, y'all live in a historically railroad community that has an agricultural tax, real similar to a lot of towns around this area and across North Carolina. But in addition to that, y'all proximity to Durham and Raleigh and places that are growing, kind of strikes a unique blend of rural and urban characteristics that really can be, again, I don't want to be taken advantage of, but having that, having those two things going on in tandem really allows for, you know, you've got access to the urban areas, and then you've got, you know, places where you can celebrate the region's history and the farms, and farm tourism, and all that good stuff that can tie into parks and recreation and leisure services overall. And while you are, while you are growing and you're a fast-growing region, we did point out that the population growth rate based on the 2040 comprehensive plan and our demographic research is that growth seems to be leveling off, you know, growing very, very slightly, but not at that super-high fast rate that other towns are in this area. I know this is quite small, but this is a graphic that represents our project schedule. So you can see where that blue star is, that's kind of where we are. The top, the top left here points out our research and data collection process. So we've worked with Chastity, we work with Angie, to gather all types of information that helps us with each of these assessments. So right now, we are summarizing the conditions of parks and greenways, we're looking at recreation programs, how the department operates, how it's maintained, what is the level of service, what is here that you provide, what should you provide more of. And then geographic, full process, we are interacting with the commissioners, or interacting with the community, and with stakeholders. When we get to our needs, our needs assessment and inventory, we'll compile all of this information, put it together in chapters and reports for the department and other stakeholders to review. We'll have partner meetings with the department, and then take those findings and work with the department and with the community to develop a ten-year vision. And once all that looks good, and all the buttons are buttoned, then we will present it back to you and ask for your blessing on it. All right, so on our community engagement, Eliza and I have been, had two meetings over the past few months with the community, the first was a public open house drop-in event that lasted a couple of hours in the Willow Room in the community center. So I just want to show you just a quick snapshot of what those, those meetings look like. So we met in March at the community center, and we also came out in April for Easter at night. So we had a really good turnout for both of those events, got very key back, which included, we asked people what they value most in the community, and know kind of those top values, where people in the community, people want to get out, they love these events, the city does such a great job, we love these events, grades, and all that. People are interested and they value health and wellness. They also are zeroed in on connectivity and growth, so want to make sure that we grow in the right direction. And both also express care and interest in nature and the environment. So in terms of what people were telling us, how the city should prioritize, these, what comes out, how y'all should prioritize your recommendations that we will develop over the next few months. Maintaining affordability was a big one for folks. Also was equitable access, so that includes, you know, the affordability factor, the accessibility of people for all ages and abilities, and then also geographic location, can people get to a park easily, either by car or by walking. So folks were interested in the city prioritizing projects that promote health and well-being, and that the parks remain safe and secure. All right, so in terms of most desired recreational amenities and programs, people were telling us they want more multi-purpose pavilions, kind of similar to what's out of Lake Rogers, that big nice shelter, flash pack, which I did hear from this group when we first met in the winter. People are quite interested in having a flash pack. Nature playhouse is another big one, and then indoor gymnasium, and you might wonder, we have an indoor gymnasium, what's up with that? And so to us, that tells us sometimes that people may not feel like they have access, like maybe it's always so busy, like they always have this room, and this class is always filled out, or, you know, I want to play pickleball and have this gym, but they have, you know, there can be complete big interest, and perhaps we need not enough information, letting people know that, hey, this is available, and, you know, this is available, and this is why it's available, and this is how you can use this thing. So all of those things, I play a role. Most desired recreational programs, special events and festivals, go Angie, outdoor movies and concerts. We typically see those as the two top most in-demand programs, across 90% of the plans that we do. So what that tells us the majority of the time is that people want more of those things. You know, you're doing it right, you do a great job, you offer these things, you know, should we offer more, should we offer stuff for an extra day? You know, so these are things that y'all would be considering over the next five to 10 years. Indoor recreation, so you know, kind of making a connection between that most desired amenity being the indoor gymnasium, and then the desire for indoor recreation. So kind of find those touchpoints, those kinds of trends that kind of stand out when we're doing community engagement, will be used, the topics, the knowledge, and tools and resources to go out and do further studies to really get down to the nitty-gritty of what people are asking for. And then technology-based programs, we don't typically see this being at the top of our list, but it was when we talked with folks in Crete. A big component of this plan is a greenway and trail assessment, and so our team is working hard on putting a greenway plan together for you all, identifying where there are gaps in the system, and where there are great opportunities to expand both these greenway-like trails and natural service trails like you brought us on it, and personal community Rogers. The people, what they like to do on these trails is they like to walk and run, they like to walk their dogs, and they like to cycle. People perceive the benefits of greenways and trails as improving their health and wellness, opportunities for socializing with friends and family, and sort of spending time outdoors overall. All right. So when we talk about needs assessment, what that means is we go through the kind of core components of what parks and recreation system offers, so that park, recreation activities and programs are the, you know, the two main kind of nuclei of Parks Department. And then we also look at how the department operates, how many staff they have, how the parks are maintained, where there are gaps. If we find that we want to do a whole bunch more special events and outdoor movies and things like that, should we consider hiring a full-time assistant for annuals, or we need a assistant or a recreation director? Over the 10-year period, those are things that may or may not come to pass, but in general, that's why this needs assessment is part of this plan. So the key observations from the parks, from our parks assessment is that the system overall, the facilities are in acceptable condition, so some targeted improvements may exist to improve aging infrastructure. So just a couple of examples of that could be the playground equipment at Lake Rogers, playground equipment, you know, it's, it has a useful life, technically 15 to 20 years. So after that kind of time period, it starts getting hard to be able to replace parts and maintain it to a level of safety and kind of that temporary aspect that people are looking for. So those are things that we noticed and that we would present to you all as a great opportunity. And we also noticed that the parks are, Lake Rogers, the Gauntlet, could benefit from some additional signage to get people from one end of it to the other. I would say, we don't want anybody to miss that harmony on anything. So if I had never been to Lake Rogers before, I may not know that there are caged trep up, caged paths, and six inch hanging canics and things like that, and like a bunch of fishing poles off in the woods right in front of me by myself. I wouldn't necessarily know that unless someone told me or I've done before. So that signage is really important, so that people can experience like the whole breadth of what recreational facility and amenity looks like. Okay, so our next step, we are wrapping up our greenways and trail assessment. We have not yet begun our operations, maintenance, and program assessment. We're working on the level of service right now, but we just want to make sure that we get all the information that we need to do these assessments, especially as Chastity was hired. So we're kind of going through a, you know, we're just, we're taking our time, we want to make sure that we do the best we can by you all, and just being as comprehensive and as caring as possible as we possibly can. We will have another touchpoint with you all and with the staff, is what we call loop back, to present to you all of our findings, making sure that we got it right, if there's anything else that needs to get looked at a second time, that we have that opportunity. And then once we have all of that, a read of plan, and everything looks good, we will start building our recommendations and action plans, so you guys can start having those concrete tasks kind of checked off in a day. We're getting this done, we did this, we invested in this plan, and it was a good investment. That is what I have to share with you all today. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here, and it's been a lot of fun. We've had, we've had a really great time working here. And we're looking forward to continuing working on the plan and finishing it up and giving you guys a path to expand into recreation in Crete. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilkins, any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes, ma'am. When do you plan to use the field?
The field?
Yeah, the field behind the community center. Is there any plans for that, other than the playground that we got the grant for?
We have not developed any plans for that yet. We're really not, we haven't gotten that, like, focused yet to where we're looking at individual sites, we're kind of just taking a broad, comprehensive look at it right now. We'll get more, we will get more information from the community. And I also did, I forgot to mention that we are currently getting ready to send out our scientific survey, so that will be a random sample of Cretemore residents. So having that in, alongside the community engagement feedback will have a better idea of what we can recommend and suggest might be the best course for that phase.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Great presentation from Glenn McAdams this year.
Thank you.
Commissioner Way.
Flash pad.
Excellent.
Thank you so much for being here. We look forward to working in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We move down now to discussion item 6A, review and approval of Resolution 2025-R-01, opposing House Bill 765. I'm going to read this resolution, and then I guess we need to vote on that. Resolution opposing North Carolina House Bill 765. Whereas North Carolina House Bill 765 entitled Local Government Development Regulations Omnibus was recently introduced in the North Carolina General Assembly, and whereas North Carolina House Bill 765 would significantly limit the ability of local governments across the state to make decisions regarding local land use, planning, and zoning, and whereas the bill undermines the authority entrusted to elected municipal officials by their communities, and whereas the bill represents a harmful reworking of local planning and zoning powers, including provisions that eliminate local standards entirely, and whereas these limitations negatively impact the ability of communities to ensure public safety and promote walkability, accessibility, and local character, and whereas the bill imposes new civil penalties on local officials for alleged violations of ambiguous planning rules potentially exposing elected representatives to legal risk for routine and good-faith decisions made in the public interest, and whereas the bill mandates new residential density requirements based solely on municipal population, allowing development by right without public input or review by elected officials, overriding local comprehensive plans, and threatening neighborhood character, and whereas the bill would remove essential tools that municipalities use to protect property values, support responsible growth, and attract new businesses and residents, and preserve the unique identity and quality of life, and whereas the North Carolina League of Municipalities has urged local governments to review and voice concerns about North Carolina House Bill 765, recognizing the bill's broad and lasting negative impact on local self-governance. So that is the resolution comment on House Bill 65. Is there any questions or comments? I guess we need a vote on that. All right, at this time, if there's no objections to the, the resolution as presented, I'll entertain a motion to not only accept it, but to take the next steps in presenting it to our representatives. I have a motion from Commissioner Albright.
Make the motion to approve the opposing Resolution 2025-R-01 and submit it to local legislative representatives.
All right, motion on the floor by Commissioner Albright. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 420. Thank you all very much. I'm hoping somebody in Raleigh Thank you all very much. I'm hoping somebody in Raleigh reads this.
Yeah, and all the others.
Yeah. All right, we move now to item 6B, which is discussion on funding for disaster training and planning. That one's mine. We had, what was it, last Saturday?
It was Tuesday.
Tuesday. We had a full day, well, half a day program on emergency services here in the boardroom. The group that came in gave us realistic approaches and examinations of what we need to do, what we need to be prepared for. This included fire, rescue, public works, police department, city staff, emergency communications, and others. One of the things they suggested we do, and we have it done, and I wanted to bring it before the board for consideration. That is purely the whole purpose of putting it in there. And their recommendation was that we start providing money for emergency services, not to have a, say, have a tornado come through town and scramble for funding. Doesn't mean we have to be prepared to pay the whole thing, but we would like to start a fund to be, get us off the ground good without feeling like we're going to have to pull a bunch of money out of the general fund. Money still, if we never spend it, it gets real high, we can always roll it back over to the general fund. Excuse me. Is there any questions or comments? Commissioner Way.
Sir?
Any questions or comments?
Not.
Okay, Commissioner Kaczynski.
So the commissioners had to take NIMs training, which is for emergency situations. Why were we not invited to this?
Well, I'm going to let the city manager address that part. The mayor was invited because of the position of leadership in that particular scenario. No oversight on what's going on. That's still the purview of the city manager. The mayor was invited for potential for public response and notifications out.
So then the other question that I have is if we started setting, we would have to need an ordinance to put this money away and designate it for emergency services. Would that be right? Lee?
So speaking with Senator Cracker, what he recommended and what they have done in there in his respective counties, you know, I think we'll just create a line item within the general fund that's dedicated for the gap to recovery. So it could be whatever amount the county wants to allocate for those purposes, or it's only for those purposes. If you don't use it, it goes back into the general fund and you can allocate those funds each year. But every fund with a separate fund, you're going to be fixed. Because you're going to keep it each year, continue to add it each year, just create a line into a general fund.
And what stops that line from being transferred somewhere else? If there's no ordinance that says this money is only for this? It's kind of like the water and sewer infrastructure money that we had. It was for water and sewer infrastructure and that was it, and it just sat there until it was needed. And then when we decided we didn't need it anymore, could take it out. I would rather, if we do something like this, to put it in a, create an ordinance and that money would go in there. Every year we could add to it. I wouldn't want the money to come back to the general fund at the end of the year if we don't need it because costs for emergency services are never going to go down from year to year. They'll only go up. So that would be my thought on it, that it would be put into a line item with an ordinance that would say that it cannot be transferred around and used for anything else. It would have to be only for emergency services. And we could make contributions to it annually so that it would grow for not. This is my thought.
And Lee, thank you for that clarification on that, too. Commissioner Wilkins.
Lee, can you quantify the amount of money we're talking about?
Okay, so. And there was no recommendation at that. It was something they suggested we consider starting because, well, we've seen quite a few tornadoes and hurricanes go through and they seem to be increasing. So just to kind of have us a little better prepared was the whole purpose of it.
It could also allow training. We could use that funds for training, like having another exercise to continue teaching staff and identifying our strengths and weaknesses going forward, whether it's every year or every other year, but that's another excellent use for it.
Any other questions or comments? Back down this way. All right, like I said, that was just purely for information for your consideration. We may bring it back before the board at a later date or through the budget. But right now, that was just for your information.
Just for my clarification, how many departments have had NIMs training? I know some prior. Okay, all right.
Me.
All right. Okay, yeah, the group left it up to the manager discretion, how many who played, who were part of, played the roles in this. There were department heads, assistants. For reasons of continuity, if one guy was out sick or wasn't here, his assistant would know how to continue to do his part. We were swamped with 50 missions, I guess. We were having real world. A tornado came through Creedmore and it took out several schools and it took down power lines and we had flooding. We had to respond, traffic control. It was an excellent exercise and I think everybody really enjoyed it. But the mayor came in to represent command and control for the city. I was the director for emergency management. County staff was here to assist. Robin Edwards was here. And of course, the people who gave this thing are very familiar because they do this full-time in Moore County and other counties. They do this training statewide and write these programs and it's our first emergency operation plan, so.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's, 6C, proposed addition of floating holiday for city employees. Camille.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. So my presentation is for the introduction of floating holiday, for the personnel policy for full-time employees. I'm proposing it. The purpose is to, for the adoption of a new place holiday policy for full-time employees aimed at promoting work-life balances and providing increased flexibility while ensuring alignment with operational needs and departmental needs. The background with this is employee engagement and well-being are critical to productivity and retention. Floating holidays are modern and flexible benefits that allow employees to take additional time off for personal, cultural, religious reasons that are not aligned with standard city holidays. This proposed policy introduces floating holidays into our structure for the first time. Eligibility is for all full-time employees. They will be granted two floating holidays per fiscal year. These holidays will become available once an employee's benefits take effect. So the first one would be used from July 1st until December 31st. They have that time to use it. And the second one would be January 1st to June 30th of that same fiscal year. Employees must request floating holidays in advance through their immediate supervisor or department head. The requests will follow existing leave requests, just like we do with sick or vacation, and subject to approval based on operational needs of the apartment. Floating holidays will not accrue from year to year. Unused floating holidays will be forfeited at the end of the fiscal year and cannot be carried forward. If a person leaves, employees will not receive compensation for unused floating holidays if they leave the city. Benefits, it supports diverse needs and enhance job satisfaction by offering flexibility. Maintain accountability and productivity through supervisors' approval and process and alignment with best practices. It reflects current trends in municipal and private sector employee benefits. In conclusion, the introduction of a floating holiday policy reflects the city's commitment to modernizing city benefits structure and supporting employee well-being. The initiatives is balanced flexibility with operational needs and promotes a positive workplace culture. We respectfully request the board's approval to implement this policy as well.
Thanks, ma'am. Real quick, what brought this on?
So I meet up with different HR directors in the area and we just talk about how to retain employees, different benefits that they use. And a lot of them use mental health days, some of them in the area use floating holidays, and I thought that would be something good, especially for people who are just starting. They don't get to use leave and like if they have to take care of something that was already scheduled, at least they can do that without worrying about how they're going to use the leave, which is already included anyway. It doesn't cost anything extra. It's no extra cost with it.
So a floating holiday is just one day?
Yes. I'm asking for two, but it's during, they can only use it during a certain time.
But if it's one day at a time, that's not, I want a two-day floating holiday.
No, it's one day and it's during a specific timeframe. And it's only if, you know, it's not a need for them to be there. Like if everybody's going to be out, of course, they can't take it, but they still have to get approved just like it would for a sick day or vacation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilkins.
Yeah, you may have answered my question already. Any other towns or cities currently doing this?
Yes, Oxford, Budner, Granville, and Henderson.
And I'm fine with it because stuff happens and people need that, so I'm good with it. So I just wanted to know, anyone else who's doing it? Thank you, Camille.
Commissioner Albright, any questions? Commissioner Kaczynski.
Well, this is right up my alley because what I say last year, everybody should get their birthdays off. I don't know what happened to that. It just kind of died in the fire. So if I started tomorrow, I could now.
It's after their benefits. So it'd be after 30 days, like when their benefits.
Is that 30? I didn't know if it was 30 days or 60 days or?
When their benefits kick in.
So is there a probation period here?
Yes, six months.
Six months, okay. Well, that would be the only thing that I would say is I'm excited about it. The only thing, the only different suggestion I would have was, should we wait until after the probationary period? I don't know. That's all I got.
Commissioner Way.
I agree. It's common practice. People use floating holidays for birthdays and religious holidays that's not recognized by employers. So I'm all for it.
All right, no further questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the addition of a new floating holiday to the personnel policy. You're jumping the gun on me again.
On purpose, too.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Wilkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries three to one. Thank you, ma'am. 6D, leave is next. Financial summary for the month ending April 30th, 2025. Mr. Faines.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Tonight, I bring before you the April financial summary report. Financiers always start with general fund revenues. The area I want to point out, taxes, we're at 97% collected. So that's, we still have April, even though this is April's financial summary, we won't see April collections until May. So this report is still missing April, May and June, so three remaining months in the fiscal year. So general fund revenues at 68% collected. General fund expenditures, we're at 80% expensed. Stormwater revenue, as far as actual stormwater collections received from the county, as well as interest earned on stormwater funds, 116%. Stormwater fund expenditures at 60% expense. Power bill fund revenues, we're at, of actual power bill funds, the two allocations from the state, also the interest earned on those funds, 37% collected. And power bill fund expenditures at 41% expense. One quick note that's not on there at the next meeting, just want to, I will be bringing for you the audit report for the next year, which I was just sent to me on this morning. So you all will receive that at the next meeting. Even though you all approved for three years, we did it every year, so I just want to put that in your ear. If you have any questions, you can feel free to ask.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Lee, I noticed the event room rental's down, off, I shouldn't say down, off the budget by 27,000. And my question is, what do we budget for next year if it's off that much? Seems like we might have overbudgeted.
So my estimates are always based on what that current year was. So last year's revenues, it was up at the moment. That line item is one of those things where you project the number, but you never know how people are going to rent.
I wanted to make sure we weren't carrying similar number four. Why not? Good, thank you.
Commissioner Albright, any questions?
No, I just said that so many, so many people can get married, you know, get married over and over again.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
So the reason that we don't have the power bill money is because the budget at the legislature hasn't been approved yet?
No, we have received, we received those funds already, those two allocations.
Oh, okay, all right, because it shows.
It shows 56% of revenue collected, but in debt revenue is funded as appropriate. So fund balance is not a number that you collect, it's the revenue that you're going to use for expenditures.
Okay. It's in parentheses that, to me, in my brain, is stuck as a negative.
Oh, no, so negatively, we collected more.
Right, got it.
So the interest earned on those funds exceeded what we projected.
Thank you.
Commissioner Way, any questions? All right, Lee, I believe you've got the next one. Discussion on revisions to fund balance available policy.
Yes, sir. So back in 2023, my first, my actual first month here, this call is brought to you all to address the fund balance policy from lowering it from 100% to 70%. Tonight, I want to start the discussion of possibly lowering it down to 50%. It's still, it wouldn't be a financial burden for the city. It actually puts us more in line with the neighboring municipalities. One is 10, one is 30, so we are right there in line. And we're still the highest fund balance policy of all the neighboring municipalities and counties. With this, it would just free up more available fund balance for us to use, especially what we, what we know we got going forward in the next few years for us to the police department and also other things that are coming available. As we know, expenditures are steadily going up and we're, our revenues are kind of at a standstill point until we see that actual growth in the city. So this is just freeing up some funds for us to use and use some of the available fund balance that we have on hand. Like I said, tonight is where we start the discussion and if you all direction, I will bring it back to you all at the next meeting for adoption of revision to the fiscal policy.
Commissioner Way, any questions? Commissioner Kaczynski, questions or comments?
I just. I, this is starting, if I hear it one more time, I'm about to lose my mind over this. I, I know that what neighboring communities do is kind of like we could stay in line with them. But if we have a crisis here in our budget, they're not going to pay. We are.
And one thing I just want to point out, this wasn't brought up.
Did somebody ask you that?
No, I wasn't, I didn't, I didn't start this by looking at what the neighboring.
No, I know that.
Yeah, it was just, I noticed that we have a pretty healthy fund balance. And we have things coming up and we can't use those things unless we drop it. We can't use those funds unless we drop the policy a little to.
And I agree with this idea because the citizens pay the tax dollars to us to use the money, not just accumulate in a bank account. So I agree with 50% is not that bad, in my opinion.
Yeah, I would go with 50%. And that's still six months of savings. Our first six months of the fiscal year is not where we earn for doing our revenues. Our revenues doesn't kick in until. Our revenues doesn't kick in until around like September and November when we start receiving those taxes from, uh, tax collections from the county. That gives us a savings of six months to think on the first half of the fiscal year.
Commissioner Albright, any questions or comments? Commissioner Wilkins? All right, I appreciate that, Lee. I think, uh, the general consensus is that we let you proceed with that direction and we'll go from there. All right. Let's see. That was six E, yep, six E one. Mr. Wilkins, I believe that was your, chancey, okay. I knew somebody gave it to me.
This is just gonna be really short and sweet. Um, I want to talk about the water testing, which we talked about at our last meeting. Um, and I just want to say exactly what I said at the Seguassa meeting. And it is, although the water test came in higher than normal and higher than we would like to see them, they are still within an allowable limit and the water is still safe. And that's all I gotta say.
Commissioner Wilkins?
Well, Commissioner Kaczynski, I was gonna, I asked this to be brought out at next meeting, but since you brought it up, uh, let me give you my take. Well, I understand that Sound Rivers said in their quote, in all five samples, there were no contaminants. They exceeded, it came back close to the primary maximum contaminant levels. The only thing that came back elevated for secondary MCLs in all five levels were iron and magnesium and those results were barely over the limits. And here's a quote that really upset me.
Who said it?
Sound Rivers, the letter from Sound Rivers. There would likely be no noticeable effects from these levels. So here's my problem with MCLs. MCL levels make us complacent. And when that happens, an action can occur when action is necessary. So we have problems with magnesium going back to nineteen, uh, excuse me, nineteen, twenty seventeen. Because magnesium over a long period of time, even at allowable ratios, is a problem to me. Our water should be colorless, odorless and tasteless. Because long-term exposure to elevated levels of magnesium, and I really don't care if they're barely over the allowable limit and have neurological effects, particularly in infants and young children. And let us not forget about the issues with excessive iron. Elevated levels of iron can cause the water to appear reddish brown or rusty and give them metallic tastes. Iron can also stain surfaces such as sinks, bathrooms and closing. Again, these are the same complaints we have heard from our citizens for years. Excessive overload of iron can cause damage to liver and heart. These effects include behavioral changes, including learning difficulties and potential impairment of motor skills. Adults may experience slower, clumsier movements. Additionally, studies have shown association between high magnesium levels in drinking water, deficit in attention, memory and motor skills. Let me continue. There's a disorder called magnetism, a neurological disorder similar to Parkinson's disease, that can develop with long-term, high-level magnesium exposure. And beyond the health aspects, let's look at the aesthetic impacts. Such as staining, dark brown or black or plumbing fixtures on your tub, on your tubs, showers and et cetera. These type of complaints, again, are what we've heard from our citizens since twenty thirteen. Iron can also impact drinking water with their metallic taste and odor in water. Again, we've heard this for years. Complacency allows you to believe in statements like, they were barely above the limit, so everything is fine. I do not believe our citizens, when they complain, are making it up and something has to be done and done quickly. I believe everything will be fine when our citizens doesn't have water that smells or comes out and stains their clothes and their fixtures. And let's go to the spreadsheet that the city manager sent out today. In all five cases, it was elevated iron and magnesium. So let me just say this, if I have to be only voice in this board for our citizens, I will happily take on that role. Thank you.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Where was this voice when you were commissioner on Seguassa board and the test failed every single month? Constantly. There has been no failure of the water for Seguassa since twenty seventeen. So we started doing.
Are we having a personal attack now?
No, I got, I got the floor, okay?
Okay. Would you attack me personally? Where was I?
Let's stop, let's stop right now and, Commissioner Kaczynski, dump a single aisle to anybody, but please continue.
Thank you.
I did, I requested this water testing to try and allay the fears of the citizens of Creedmore because there were too many people being terrified of what was going on. And it was a truth-seeking mission, to find the truth of the water because people were accusing Seguassa and accusing the city of not helping and stuff like that. So I wanted to find, get to the bottom and get to the truth. And yes, these levels are higher than we'd like to see them. And I'm not taking Seguassa's side and I am not shooting the messenger. I am just saying that to say that the water failed is, is not, it's your opinion and you didn't speak for the board and you didn't say you spoke for the board, it's just your opinion. Um, but yes, they have been talking about the color and the odor and these are the two components that caused that problem. And all I'm saying is they were within the allowable limits. That's all I'm saying. I didn't say you're right. I didn't say you're wrong. All I'm saying is they're within the allowable limits. It's not a personal attack on you.
Okay, Commissioner Albright, any questions or comments?
No, I do remember though, I couldn't remember which microphone was mine. I do remember though, um, one of, one of the emails that we got had said that we should have waited, like, you know, ran the water for three minutes or so before we made the testing, we, we took the test. And I, I think that was, that was probably something that we should have done before the tests were.
We'll get to the end of this, all that might, in fact, I'll let you comment on it now before we go to Commissioner Way.
All right, I, I, we had a meeting with Scott and he suggested we run these hydrants three minutes, half, half open, half line to clear the lines. And so I called Pace to ask exactly how they ran these tests. The part of the room that goes out, they designate these hydrants randomly. And the gentleman told me he goes out and he opens the hydrant and he runs it for about five minutes while he's getting all of his tools and papers and things together. Then he cuts it off and then he draws his sample. So he's running it two minutes longer than Scott had suggested. Uh, gave me a level of comfort that they're good. The, the water in the line from the main line to a horizontal, to a vertical, to the hydrant is kind of pressure locked. It can't go anywhere unless they open it for, for a fire or open it to flush it or whatever. So that's the reason they say flush it that long, to get the clear water in the main line to the top of that, where they're drawing it from, so. And Pace is doing the right thing. I was satisfied to hear that.
Commissioner Way?
Commissioner Wilkins?
Sure.
Your statement at the end there, if you'll be the only commissioner to stand up for our citizens. I try to stand up for our neighbors every time I, I have a chance. And I'll even take it a step further. The money that we just put back in the general fund from our water and sewer for one million dollars, I'll make a motion that we take that one million dollars and assist our citizens here in Creedmore in finding a solution to fix the problem that we have. As stated earlier by another commissioner, that money has been put in by citizens of Creedmore, by taxes that they've paid. And if they want to go ahead and continue to be champions and, and let us know as far as emails and phone calls and text messages about their stance on the water and sewer issues in our community, I'm all for taking the money that we already had to the side for those improvements and basically putting our money where our mouth is.
Thank you, sir. Um, the question I've got, and I guess this would be between, uh, the city manager and our representatives. I've, I've seen the test results. They are above the normal range. How, if we bring them down a tenth of a percent below the normal ranges, is that going to make a substantial difference?
The last test was taken April the twenty-fourth and I'm expecting those results to come back this coming week, by the end of this week or first of next week. That will be, I think, a clear indication on how that water quality looks with this second round of testing.
Okay, but my question is, let's say they come back a tenth of a percent or whatever, below normal. Is that, what kind of effect is that going to have on our color or our taste? Um, anything like that? In other words, being below normal, is that going to be a significant change to what our citizens are currently experiencing?
From having taste to not having any taste or smell or odor, I'm not qualified to answer that. I would have to reach out to somebody else and ask them, if it comes in below those numbers, does that mean the cosmetic or aesthetic taste color, colors are gonna go away? I don't know.
Okay, that, that, that was basically my question.
So one other item that affects these tests and this water results are the time of the year. Fall and spring are the two times when the water and the temperature can cause a fluctuation in numbers. Um, there, the reportable limit was point zero one nine and the test came in at point five zero. That's a difference. That's a big difference. Um, somebody go out and test it the next day, the same hydrant, doing the same thing, the next day it could change that much. Um, when they talked about flushing the lines, I thought about how I'd use the water in my house. I run the water for a while before I, you know, take a shower or before the water gets hot in my house, it runs for a while. I don't know if it's three to five minutes, but I've always run water for a little while before I take it out. But I was concerned about the comment of letting it run for three minutes myself when I first heard it. But when it was explained to us that that pipe for the hydrant, the water that's sitting in that pipe for that hydrant is sitting there. And unless there's a fire, that water doesn't move. It just sits there. So you've got to flush that to get the good water to come out. It makes perfectly good sense when you listen, when you think about it that way because the only way the water in that pipe for the fire hydrant is gonna move is when there's a fire. So if we're using the fire hydrant to test the water, we've got to get that old water that's been sitting there. It doesn't generate, it doesn't move, it doesn't, it doesn't clear out. So once I understood that, um, then it made perfectly good sense. However, I can't answer your question either because I'm not a scientist or a chemist and I don't work for Seguassa. I'm just a representative of Creedmore. And, um, I will tag on to Commissioner Way's comment. I suggested this to help the citizens of Creedmore. That was why I suggested this testing. And it was to allay the fears and go on a truth-finding mission to find out what is the truth. Is the water okay? Is the water not okay? And we've got a, a sample that we're all questioning. We're all questioning it. And we will see what the next set of samples are. Um, Mike, I believe when we talked to Scott and Chris, um, last Thursday, didn't they say they went out and ran those same fire hydrants and ran tests on them and the numbers came in lower?
Each, each time they took the test, they said it came down lower. They did say they were working on a flushing schedule too.
And that's the other thing. In our new budget, we have, we're hiring two utility maintenance people so that we can get on it. If, if Seguassa had been automatically flushing these hydrants like they were supposed to be doing for us all these years and Commissioner Wilkins remembered that the last time we talked about this, we might not be here. But they do have two people in the budget if our budget gets passed. And I can promise you that Commissioner Way and I will be pushing to make sure that there is a, that is a good schedule and it's set up and it's followed. And I think that flushing that stagnant water out of these lines, I think the water's good. It's just if it sits in, I don't know where the iron and magnesium comes from. It might come from the pipes. I'm not a scientist. I don't know the answer to that. But when they tested it a day or two later, it was gone and the numbers were lower.
Got it. Christopher Albright?
If we.
Mr. Wilkins?
The records show no time that I say anything about a failed test, as Commissioner said. And number two, Commissioner Kaczynski, I still love you.
That's what it says in the paper, well.
Okay, you don't, you don't. Commissioner Way, did you have any comments?
Uh, Mr. I think I spoke pretty much what was on my mind.
That's what we always want. Yeah, like Commissioner Albright?
So I've lived in the same neighborhood for twenty-two years and my hydrant has never been flushed. I can't imagine what they might find in there if they took a sample.
Might be a good idea.
I didn't hear what you said.
Please repeat.
Please repeat. There's a old woman down here.
I said I've lived in the same neighborhood for twenty-two years and my hydrant has never been flushed.
Your hydrant was flushed last week. It's on the list. It's on the list that, uh.
So shouldn't there be water all over my neighborhood though? Shouldn't there be water, like?
Minjulip was one of the streets they did a water test on the twenty-fourth, so that will be getting, they flushed that. Whether it ran down an additional way or whatever, but they, they ran it for five minutes.
I didn't see any water, so.
Okay.
The stormwater drains are working.
Well, but the, where the, where the hydrant is, it's like in the, in the middle of the lady's yard. So there isn't really a whole lot to, maybe it was one of the days it rained. I don't know. You know what? I wasn't there.
They did Minjulip and they did in front of Archer's House. And Julip is twenty-five sixty-one, I don't know.
Twenty-five sixty-one Minjulip.
Street, yeah.
They're, they did Westborne too.
All right, let's move along to, uh, six F, city manager's recommended budget.
All right, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Proctium absent today tonight and commissioners. In accordance with the North Carolina Local Government Budget and Physical Control Act, I'm pleased to submit to you this evening for your considerations of proposed fiscal year's twenty-five dash twenty-six operating budget. Following the strategic planning retreat in February, two budget work sessions were held in March and April. Understanding the needs of the city departments and evaluating the details of funding requests, the FY twenty-six general fund budget is proposed to be seven million, three hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and three dollars or nine percent above the current year's adopted budget. This budget was strenuous as we worked to achieve a, a budget that's physically responsible and advances the goals as, as set by the Board of City Commissioners. This budget also focuses on needed personnel within the police department to effectively operate as well as preparing for the future growth ahead. This proposed budget invests in the growth, retention and compensation of our employees who are valuable and essential to the daily operation of city government. At this point, I'm gonna stop and ask Lee if he'll come up to walk you through his presentation and then following the board's questions and discussions and directions, I'll have a few closing remarks. Mr. Fains? and then following the board's questions and discussions and directions, I'll have a few closing remarks. Mr. Payne.
I actually thought that was the speaker or something.
All righty. So, I have to get a minute straight here. I'm just gonna walk through briefly. It's recommended FY26 budget. This next slide just shows the budget calendar and the process that we went through for the fiscal year. So, we're right now at number four, the presentation for you all to hear. Also in this month is when I will, the spending cutoff and hiring freeze until July 1st so we can lock down expenditures for the, end of the fiscal year. And June 3rd is where you will, we will have the public, uh, public hearing for the proposed budget where the citizens can come in and voice their opinions and concerns. And then also on that date is if all goes well, you all's consideration for adoption. So, just a brief overview. Our FY26 general fund budget total is $7.3 million. Total budget for all funds, so general fund, stormwater, and power bill, $7.9 million. Total property valuation, $653,512,288 dollars as of April 23rd, 2025, when I received a, a report from the tax office. So, with the calculation that we use to estimate tax revenue for the upcoming fiscal year is, is a calculation that takes the proposed tax rate times per $100 of assessed value times our collection rate from our last audit, which was 99.7%. So, that brings estimated budgeted tax revenue for FY26 is $3.3 million. FY26 budgeted sales tax revenue is $1.8 million. That number I was conservative with for this fiscal year. I left it, um, flat due to the direction from, uh, NCLM regarding the sales tax for, uh, forecasting where they seen that it's kinda flattened out there, telling us to be conservative because they're unsure of the direction it may go. Here's just a brief, uh, chart that kinda shows percentages. Of course, Avalon being our main source of revenue for the city. And it breaks down the other categories of other taxes and licenses, restricted, unrestricted, investment earnings, also in there for sales and permits, um, and miscellaneous. So, this is the big slide. Recommended FY26 tax rate, uh, 52 cents per $100 valuation. One penny equals $65,130, an increase of 10 cents per $100 valuation. Just kinda break this 10 cent down to kinda show where this 10 cent is actually going. Of course, you all know we're in the process of, we have a police department that we have to deal. So, 2 cents of this 10 cent is towards that police department building. 3.3% of this is, so back in 2023, the city adopted, uh, not adopted, but went to a contract to, to give the fire department 6 cents, um, per $100 evaluation of city's tax base. Even though the county went through a, uh, revow, the 6 cents stayed the same for the fire department. So, therefore, their, their allocation to the, um, fire department went up 3 cents. This is to address that increases well and then the remaining 4.7% is towards, um, operating costs, in which a lot of that is due to the recommended personnel and things that goes along with those personnel positions and, um, other capital items. So, fund balance appropriated to balance the budget, uh, $676,787, $15,199 more than what was appropriated in this current, uh, budget. So, personnel recommendations for the FY26 budget. In the police department, we have four positions, all being effective July 1st, 2025. A part-time accreditation manager also effective July 1st, 2025. We have a buildings and grounds maintenance worker in public works, um, that position being effective July 1st, 2025 as well. And this position is partially funded by stormwater and power bill funds. So, some key budget highlights that I would like to point out, um, in this proposed budget. The Holly Creek Lane roadway study, uh, there's $20,000 budgeted there for that study. Uh, $5,000 budget for the software upgrade and community development. Uh, in recreation, we have the Upper and Lower Lot building and striping at the community center, uh, totally $14,800. The dumpster pad at the community center, uh, replacing the trash corral that is currently there now, uh, $20,000. Uh, landscaping at Harris Park, uh, $7,000 allocated towards that. In the police department, there's additional canine as well and the supplies that goes along, goes along with that canine, $25,000. Uh, uniforms, firearms, equipment that goes along with those four requested and recommended, uh, personnel in the police department, $49,750. Four new vehicles and two replacement vehicles. Um, as you all know, we are under, currently leasing through the Enterprise Fleet Management. So, the two replacement vehicles will put all vehicles in line with that, uh, that leasing policy that we have. In this budget is also 4% cost of living adjustment. And one thing to point out, the elders' employee contribution rates went up for law enforcement. It went from 15.0, 15.04% to 16.10%. General employees went from 13.65% to 14.35%. And this is a trend that we are seeing every year where it's going up almost a percent each year for the elders' contribution. And this graph just shows the, um, percentages of third department. Uh, of course, our largest expenditure being the police department. Next being recreation and public works and administrative services. This next slide points out the outside agency funding request. All the requests that we receive, they are fully funded per their request. Crime Stoppers being a new addition this fiscal year, uh, $500. So, you see in FY26, Families Living Dollars Free, $1,000. Granville County Veterans Affairs, $500. Creedmore Cemetery Association, $5,100. Crime Stoppers 500, Granville County Search and Recovery, $2,000. And Granville County Historical Society, $550. So, for Stormwater, uh, revenue assumptions, Stormwater Collection, $411,313. Interest income on those funds, uh, $30,000. Recommended expenditures, uh, three budgets within Stormwater Admin and Planning, $286,867. Repairs and improvements, um, $129,746. And service payments of $25,500. Power bill funds, um, revenue, state allocations, we have, uh, allocating an estimated $153,000. Interest income, $34,000. Expenditures, expenditures budget is $200,909. And this is funds, uh, appropriated for the resurfacing of Douglas Drive and Mack Street, um, appropriating, uh, $13,909 of fund balance of power bill funds. So, next, um, just one change to the fee schedule. There was a recommendation to change the fees associated with the Creedmore Music Festival, changing the 12 by 12 vendor stall, uh, with electricity from $140 to $150, so just a $10 increase there. And that's the only change, uh, to fee schedule. So, next up, um, there will be a public hearing, the, at the next legislative meeting on Monday, June 3rd, 2025. The FY26 budget and the, uh, manager's budget message and presentation will be available on the city website, uh, tomorrow for citizens to go out and to look at the message and presentation. And just to look excerpt at the bottom, recommended budget may be considered for adoption at the conclusion of the June 3rd public hearing or at any special call board meeting for that purpose or at the June 17th scheduled board meeting. But if all goes well, uh, we'll be looking for approval at the June 3rd meeting. And of course, um, for more direction from you all after this meeting. And thank you for your input thus far and we are open to more input. So, me and the manager can work to have a final budget to present to you all at the next meeting. Yes, sir. Thank you all.
All right. I keep hearing the Mayor Pro Temp, I'm sorry he's not here, saying, "We should have raised taxes. We should not have cut taxes." And I was looking at Lee's chart here. That's absolutely correct. My issue is that to raise this 10 cents, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, $300,000, or City Manager, $300,000 home could get hit with $300 increase in tax bill. Is that about right?
Yes, that $300.
I struggle to do that to our citizens. I can see 5 cents. And again, we should have done this all along, but no board since 2013, 17, has raised them. And this board is deviated from different individuals in that time span. So, although Mayor Pro Temp is correct, we should have, but we did not. So, I just don't see slamming our citizens with a 10 cent increase at this point, which means if you go with my suggestion of 5, Mr. City Manager, you have to fine $325,000 off this budget. That's all that happens to me.
But, and I, I, I agree with Archer, um, or Commissioner Wilkins, with, about people didn't, you know, raise taxes. They, they lowered taxes every time. And we did try, um, two of us tried to at least do like one or two cents last year just to kind of soften the blow from what this board will have to face this year. And I just want the citizens to remember that when we, if we raise taxes, that includes all of us as well. It's not just everybody except us. Sometimes you have to tighten your belt and, um, it may not feel right, but sometimes it's the right thing to do, even though it feels a little uncomfortable.
So, to what Lee said, and I was on the board at the time, when we gave the fire department the 6 cents, I remember saying exactly this. I went back and checked the recording. So, we were at 62 cents. We're going to now run the city on 56 cents instead of 62 cents. At that time, when we took 6 cents out of our operating funds, we should have raised taxes at least 3 cents to cover it. And I believe Carla told us at that time to do it. So, we, after two years of this, we are feeling a heck of a hit. And it's because we didn't raise taxes when we gave some of our tax base to the fire department. And I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't have given it to the fire department. That's not the point. The point is, we'll give them 6 cents. They were getting $152,000 a year and now they're over $400,000 and they need it. But we were wrong back then. We should have raised taxes at least 3 cents to cover half of that. And now, two years later, we are feeling, I have never seen this budget this far out of whack like I have this year. But I have questions. And their chief, their chief wheel is questions. Step up to the microphone and tell us your name and your, no, don't tell us your address. Um, I, we all got a copy of the, of the line item budget request for March 18th. So, a couple questions. If you hire, if you hire two of your four police officers to go to BLET, that means how long will it be before they get to work? Is it 12 weeks?
That'll be, so, I think this year they just upped it to, it's longer than it has been before. I think before it was around four months. Now it's like six months, just because of more additional hours they've added. So, I think this coming up class starts in July and I think they're done around the 1st of December.
1st of?
December.
Wow. Okay, so...
Field training, which is...
Have you worked on a contract for these employees with the attorney yet to get reciprocal years of service from these officers?
So, we currently have, uh, if we pay for training, we, uh, in their contract, uh, the city's contract is already, uh, is already established that we can try to recuperate up to two years of, you know, if they leave the city before two years. That's already done. That's already in the contract that we have our new people.
So, if they leave the, if they leave the city before two years is up, what happens?
Then we, the city can try to recuperate some of that money that we spent on their training.
Can try, but I don't think we have a leg to stand on, on that issue. Um, because I definitely want to be able to get some of the money back since they are not on our streets, which is where we actually need them. Um, okay. Um, the administrative sergeant, since you're asking for two surplus vehicles, could this administrative sergeant not get a take-home car and use the surplus vehicle if he needs to go out and patrol? Is it possible?
Asking for surplus vehicle or replacement vehicles.
Well, it said surplus in what, what Lee just gave us. It said surplus vehicle.
To be replaced on that surplus.
Really? Again? Okay, so, but anyway, don't we have one or two surplus vehicles on, in this police department? In case one goes down, we have another one?
The only vehicle that we have available now is actually assigned to the person that we have on military duty. We have two charges in the back and...
Right. I know about them.
So, other than that, that's the only other vehicle that we have.
Well, that's the issue that I'm had. I mean, I'm trying to find a way to cut costs and the cut cost is an administrative sergeant doesn't need a vehicle if he's gonna be working in the office. I understand. We use him when we need him. I got that. Is there any other way he could get a vehicle other than?
No. Not if, not if you're giving everybody else a vehicle. That's, you can't treat them differently and not give them...
But they're not doing the exact same job as...
I mean, sure they do. None of us are above being a police officer.
You shouldn't get one to take home because you sit in an office all day long.
No, I'm not. What time do I see you in the morning? I work more than anybody. I work where I was at the... About 7:00 AM in the morning, so...
Okay, that's, that was that. Um, I am not in favor of another canine. I have not seen anything out of the canine that we have. Matter of fact, I've seen the officer four times and all four times without the dog.
The dog doesn't travel with him. The dog, the dog is in the car. It's not a, so he doesn't, so when he comes for the meetings or he's out in public, if the dog is not working, he's a working dog. He's not with him all the time if he's not in need of working him. But sure, we use a dog. We use them last week. We, we use them all the time to walk to our schools and...
So, if we need a canine on a shift... So if we need a canine on a shift other than the one that he's assigned to right now, we could always reach out to the sheriff's department who has one on every shift. So, and, and on your March request for the canine, it says twenty-seven thousand five hundred fifty dollars, and on the presentation we just had, it was twenty-five thousand. So I'm not sure what the price really is here, because we got twenty-seven five fifty on one document and twenty-five thousand on another.
So if you, you still have an existing dog, so if you, if, if you have, if you're requesting a new dog, then you pay for that dog and training, which varies anywhere from fifteen to probably seventeen thousand, then you have the vet bills, you have all that stuff, you have an existing dog you have to pay that for, and now you're getting a new dog, which you have to provide the kennel and all the equipment for that. Um, the March fourteenth one was probably the very first one that, that we submitted before we did make some cuts.
So the twenty-seven five fifty is the actual number?
I'm guessing twenty-five five four, yeah.
Okay, so, but if we don't get another canine, we could always call the sheriff's office and they could bring one down if we needed to.
They have one available as well.
Well, I was told today they have one on every shift. So, um.
But that wouldn't necessarily mean that.
Okay, okay, well, we did very well without a dog for a while, so I'm just saying, we're trying to find ways to cut, that's all I'm trying to say. Uh, community outreach is, request is eighty-five hundred dollars. We've only used six thousand this year. Um, six thousand five hundred forty-four dollars current year actual, that was in March, I got that. Um, I would like to see this eighty-five hundred dollar request go back down to six thousand dollars. Um, and I know this is not a lot of money here and there, but when you add it all together, it comes up. Um, the senior budget, there was zero budgeted in twenty-four. There were thirty-three hundred dollars budgeted through twelve, it's, actual fiscal year twenty-four budget was zero.
That, that wasn't budget, that was grant money that we received.
I understand that, and that's what I'm saying is, um, we'll use grant money for the senior programs again this year. We don't need to put money in the budget for it, we could use, because every department head that's here, every department head that's here, it is my request that every department head in this building apply for grants before you come to the board, ask them for more money. There's grant money out, there's grant money for a dog, there's a grant money out there for canines. Um, we can't keep hitting our taxpayers like this. We've got to find a way to cut it somewhere, and I'm tired of seeing headlines of this town got this grant and that town got that grant. We need grants, and every department needs to find a way to apply for grants. Um, so I would like to see the, a zero budgeted amount for the senior programs and grant money be used for that. Um, the uniform budget in twenty-four was thirty-two five eighty, the current actual is eighteen seven fifty-three, and requested is fifty-two thousand, and I know that's for your new officers, right? Okay. Um, firearms and weapons. Uh, firearms and weapons actual is ten thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars. You're asking for forty thousand dollars. Do we need thirty thousand dollars more weapons?
So as stated in the budget retreat, our weapons are old, I think it's almost, they're almost ten years old. Um, granted, the usage of those are, have been for training, because we're required to shoot them every year, but you get the parts and pieces to those weapons that wear down over time with, um, you know, just with wear and tear.
Yeah.
But also too, that's the one piece of equipment that I have, God forbid if I ever have to use it, it has to work.
Right.
Um, and so that would be, that would go into replacing the firearms that we've had that are approaching nine.
So what do we do with the old guns?
So, uh, at least trade them in, sell them back.
Okay, so we would get some revenue, not a lot, but.
We should get some back for.
Okay. Those are my questions. I appreciate your answers. Um. I ain't done yet, give me a second here, would you please? Um, Lee, one more question that I had for you. The amount of money we have to take out, so we are going to go down to fifty percent, maybe, um, taxes ten cents, and we still have to take six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars out of the general, uh, the general fund, which is higher than we did last year.
Yes, ma'am, about fifteen thousand ninety-nine.
And this is why I, I say to this board, we really are in bad shape. I have never seen this bad situation since I've been on the board since twenty-twenty, and it's frightening, but when I think about the fact that we took six cents out of our tax revenue to give to the fire department and didn't replace it, that, that is, I believe that is what is our biggest hurt right now, is that. And we can't take the money back from the fire department, we've got a contract with them for five years, and they're entitled to that money. But that money should have been replaced, and it is gonna be, it's gonna hurt me just as much as it hurts anybody else that has to do this, but, um, and we've got a plan, and, and Lee, I want to ask you this, if we do this ten cents, that doesn't mean that in the next two years, we won't have a tax increase again. We have to keep, this is what Carla told us years ago, it had to keep going up for it, otherwise we would be exactly where we are.
So this, this ten cent, if we were to go with it today, would cover.
Forty-five years.
Or.
This year.
Couple, I'd say two to three years until, and I want to say that, the thing, one thing about Creemore is, and I'm pretty sure Carla, at the time when she was here, is just one of the things that she stresses well to me when I first came on, the city is in a place, and has been for the last numerous years, where revenues have been here, but the spinners have been going here. So we have been operating behind for the last few years. Um, granted, the city hasn't, in those two years, I don't think there has been any major request that has came about, but as we've been discussing, and the, and the topic is, and yes, we're not really going to see that growth until twenty-eight, twenty-nine, until things are actually built and people have moved in, those homes are occupied, but we have to prepare for those things. Um, so, yes, have the tax rate should have been increased a few years ago? Yes. Um, but that's why we are here to address those things now. So this tax increase here will put us in a good place, because also, one thing we gotta rec, uh, and we'll be coming back to you probably in the June meeting, is the police department building, and what that cost estimate might be. Um, so we have to plan for all of those things, PD has to plan for those positions that's going to be needed for the growth. Um, if the city wants to plan on how to phase some things in, yes, that's an option. But my job as the finance director is to advise the city manager and you all on what my, my take on it is, and what I feel like will put us in a good place for these next few years, until the city grows, and then, who knows when the city grows, we're able to drop the tax rate because the tax base has increased. So, but we need to do something now. Uh, we can't wait until that time to come and try to fix it right then. Yes, it do, it seems like it's a large amount, yes, um, but like, like the recreation master plan, we want nice things. Um, like I said, we want a splash plan, we want, uh, more recreation amenities, um, and things like that. Yes, our largest tax, uh, revenue, our revenue is, is on the, is the tax, is our airborne taxes, um, that's how majority, we don't have new revenues in the city, we don't have those things that we can bank on, um, and one thing I just mentioned, uh, we are conservative with our interest income and sales tax. So that was one of my recommendations, is to, let's do this now. Um, then we can plan out the next few years, if we want to cut back the next few years of adding anything, uh, doing any other capital items and just waiting, we can plan that, that'd be a good thing to talk about at the strategic planning meeting in February, coming up with a plan on how we're gonna, how we're gonna operate these next few years on what we got now. But right now, I feel like this is what we need now to operate and get us in a good place. Um, PD has the staff he needs to operate currently, because I have seen it where he's lacking on some things.
So.
But it puts him in a, in a good pace, place where he, um, are operating officially and fiscally.
So is there a special salary range for the police officers who will be in training? Is there a, a lower rate that, that they, or they start at the, the hiring level salary?
Based on what we have now, they will be hired at the minimum rate, uh, ranges, I think, starting at like forty-nine thousand, forty-nine thousand if I'm correct.
So they would be at that range for six months while they go to school? And, um.
And if, if Chief wants to entertain it, uh, increase for them completing, or have them fulfill their next few years, is, is that the direction of, of Chief?
Well, I'd like to see us go to a three-year payback, but two years is, if that's what's in the contract already.
Mr. Wilson, any questions?
No, no, um, you know, dealing with budgets and P and Ls and, and things of that nature is tedious, frustrating, um, sometimes rewarding. Um, I think one of the biggest things that we've had is, uh, the, the department heads have gone through their budgets and know what they need, uh, those recommendations came back, we've already dissected them, um, talked about it. One of the biggest things that, that we have is, we haven't grown as a city with our infrastructure resources as the community has grown around us. Um, one of the biggest things that I do struggle with is a tax increase. And, I mean, I sat here last year and didn't want to, I wanted to go with what we had because it, that's, that's a large chunk of change that comes out, um, when you factor in what you have to pay to the county and then the city on top of it. And, um, my mortgage rate itself went up almost five hundred dollars. I mean, it's, and that's because, you know, everything's compounded with it, and you know, the insurance thing, so it's, it's tough. It's tough, I mean, it's, but it's a necessity. And I think the biggest thing is, we have to go with the recommendation from the people that we put our trust in and hire to lead these departments and come to these conclusions. Does it mean that we have to, to cut back a little bit on something? Absolutely possibly, but I believe that for the future of our community, that we need to go with recommendations that are offered. We have to step up and be able to provide the services that we say we're going to provide with the staffing levels we're going to provide. I don't want to have our staff have burnout, I don't want our staff to fall behind other jurisdictions and communities where they can leave and go make more money. Um, I love our town, I love all our people that work here, I love the people that live here. This is just an issue that we're gonna get through, we'll get through it. It's, it's just gonna be something that, um, we have to put one foot in front of the other. And like I said last year, you know, I, I support my family of five, and with the reevaluations, that was a hit, and, and it was an eye-opening hit when I got that bill. And every month when I have to put those funds to have that roof over my head, and I know groceries cost more money, but let's face it, nothing is going to go down. Unfortunately, it's just the world that we live in, but you know, we are, we're resilient people, and we will overcome if we even have to help each other. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Wilson.
First question is for clarification. The two replacement vehicles going to lease program, what's the actual cost to us, if you don't mind?
Behind you, Lee, watch out.
Oh, you tell me. So. Yeah, so for the cars that were requested, each vehicle on under the lease, um, program is nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents, but that's also including the equipment, the upfitting of the vehicle, the enterprise would do as well before PD even receives them, so that's upfitting, that's the vehicle plus upfitting and everything that goes into that car.
Vehicle plus a thousand, and what's the vehicle run?
Uh.
Vehicle prior seven.
Yeah. So that nine ninety-eight is the vehicle plus equipment.
Per month.
Per month.
Okay, I, I may have missed you when you said per month, okay. So it's not that significant.
Commissioner, thank you.
I wasn't done, by the way.
Have we looked at, I, I know that I asked, I asked, meaning or two, about health insurance for our employees, have we found a member of health insurance company, have we looked at this, where are we on that?
So yes, we have. Um, the problem is, we're not gonna get like Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, some of those, um, companies like our neighbors, because we're not big enough, and we have retirees that's grandfathered in. So they go out in the market, they find different things for us that is accommodable, that's gonna accommodate us with the retirees and the amount of employees that we have. Yes, we did find one, they just came back today with a better rate for us, so, yes, and it's beneficial for the town as well as the employees.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wilson.
I wasn't done.
I just, the conversation came up about police vehicles, and I just wanted to add that the cost in there for the lease is beneficial in the long run based on the issues that the law enforcement vehicles have with transmission and brakes and things of that nature, those are considered large, um, expenses.
Yeah.
And with the lease program, Chief's able to take that back to the, the leasing, the leasing and say, hey, we're the leasing, we need you to fix these problems, transmission's gone out, and that way he's not coming to us saying. Stand by, we have technical difficulties. It's basically to, to not come back to us and say, hey, I've got to put a new transmission in a police car that we have to keep, you know, for another two years. And it's, it's just, I think it's more beneficial because now we don't have the overhead of the city owning the vehicle, and when it reaches that certain mileage point and wear and tear, we swap it out and we get a new one. Instead of having what we have now where we have to park vehicles because they've got a transmission issue or the engine's not working, and they're basically just sitting there as a, a ornament until we can put it on surplus.
Yeah, all of those things are covered under warranty.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert.
Mr. Wilson.
And that's why I asked the question, because I knew that, it's not a big, I'm late, being a state employee, I know that. Um, Chief, get that canine, I'm all for it. Uh, last thing, I know the inflation rate as of April twenty twenty-five is two point three one percent, and I know you guys started working on this early. Any reason why we went to four percent on the COLA instead of three, which is the norm for the business, the industry and government?
So at the time, I did a study of surrounding, uh, neighboring counties, municipalities, everybody were doing a three or four percent COLA, if not doing one of those things, they were doing a salary or a compression study. So they were doing some type of study, but it was still well within the three. So they were doing some type of study, but it was still well within the 3, it was 3 or 4%.
And does that, that does not include any kind of merit increase?
No, so the city still budgets, we budget for a merit increase, uh, each year at a rate of 2%, uh, which is the middle. Um, but I think our max is 2.5%. Um, but that's based on your performance evaluation each year.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So on Commissioner Wilkins, could we go down to 3% on the COLA since we did the two floating holidays? Um, would that, I mean, that's a possibility? Um, the other thing is the $990 for the police cars, does that include the, all the equipment and the wrap? And does that include everything, the, the lap, the laptop that goes in the car and the radios and everything else? And the computer's usually about $1,500 if I remember? So we could say roughly a thousand dollars a car? But that's not a monthly bill, that would be a one-time?
One-time, yeah.
Okay.
Quick question, I have a little, follow-up. Um, last year we wanted to keep taxes low, so we pulled money out of several accounts.
Yes, sir.
This year we're reducing it from 70% to 50% and I think that what they included of, 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 to the taxes will be out of it.
No, so that's raising, lowering it from 70 to 50% is just freeing up funds in our policy of our, um... Yeah, based on our fiscal policy, but of our unrestricted fund bound, it's, it's freeing up, uh, 20% of those funds that were locked up.
That money will really have any effect on the tax rate?
No, that's just, no.
We did like...
No, so that, that policy then doesn't have any effect with, uh, budget that's proposed to you today.
Okay, uh, last thing is, we talked about, um, using our money for our first station.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, are we going to, yes, that's what it's about. Is there going to be any kind of benefit on us when that comes through or if you want to play it down? We, we don't know what that is going to cost, if there are.
Right, so that's why I included the 2 cent in this recommendation today to prepare for that debt payment that we're going to have either for 15 years or 20 years. Um, but we're also going to, we, because we had discussions of using general fund dollars to lower the debt borrowing, um, amount. And I will bring to you my recommendation, I have my recommendation already, but I'm just waiting to hear Little's, their final cost estimate to give that final recommendation to you all. Um, so that I can be positive and sure on that. Um, but like I said, I think that we coming to you all after the next meeting in June? I was just saying June, in June, either the first or the mid, uh, work session, um, but it'll be coming to you all soon, so, yes, sir. You're welcome.
Thank you, Lee. Um, first I'd like to thank you, to thank the board for your comments and feedback and your continued support. I would especially like to publicly express my appreciation to the city finance director and the department heads for all the work that they put into this budget and the adjustments and the cuts and understanding. Um, under the leadership and direction of the board of commissioners, I look forward to another successful year that brings us closer to achieving the goals identified by the board and enhancing the level of services that we provide to the citizens of Creedmoor. That's, uh, all I have and let's see if questions from the board.
Any questions, uh, Professor?
All right, um, before I, as for the jury, I'd like, uh, just want to let you know that the board, our prayers have been really keeping us free and we're turning this way up, get up there, thank you Ken, uh, we're, we're here for you, please. All right, anything else, please, before the board? All right, I'll let it, uh, to her that. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Wilkins, I just made the motion to adjourn, all in effect, say aye.
Aye.
Post no. Thank you, Paul, so much.
Thank you for beaming the city of Creedmoor, please have a great night and safe travels.